Uh, Sherri, uh, welcome Sherri Rupert. Can you come up? Thank you for spending some of your day with us today. I appreciate you coming in and talking to us. Um, kind of how this will go, each board member will ask a couple of questions of you. Um, and then we'll go from there. Of course, uh, we'll get through the interview. You're more than welcome to stick around after the interview and see the interview, or if you have to leave, that's understandable too. We'll get back to you very quickly about an outcome. So having said that, uh, I'll start off by, uh, why don't you briefly tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the position?
Sure. Uh, my name is Sherri Rupert and I'm currently the Executive Director of the State of Nevada's Indian Commission. I've been with the Commission for fourteen years now. Just amazing how time flies by. Um, I'm a proud native Nevadan. I was born here in Carson City and actually the Carson Tahoe Hospital just up the road here, um, as were my, my two sons and my husband. Uh, we're all born at the same hospital, not at the same time. Um, and I grew up in, we shortly moved to Gardinerville. I think I was in first grade. I went to Corbett School here in Carson City, uh, but moved on to the reservation. Uh, my mom had remarried and so I grew up, um, out on the Washoe Reservation in Dresslerville and, um, attended Douglas High School, um, not Carson, but Douglas. And, um, then went on to college, um, initially to the University of Washington in Seattle. Um, and then, um, that weather up there was just too much for me. Um, we're used to the 300 days of, of sun, you know, here in Nevada. And so then I transferred to Sac State for a while and then I moved back to Nevada and, um, finished my degree here at the University of Nevada Reno. I'm Paiute in Washoe, um, as I said, grew up on the Washoe Reservation and, um, for the most part of my life had called Nevada home. Um, have lived here in the Carson City area, lived in, actually in Las Vegas for a while too, for about five years, um, and then moved back here because this has always been home to me. Our people are tied, um, to this land and to Lake Tahoe. Um, that's where our people are from. And, um, so that place always calls to me when I move away, um, from Nevada or even from Carson City. And, um, so our family is sixth generation from the area here and so I'm very familiar with the area and with the people and with what we're trying to build here in Carson City and in Nevada.
Uh, thank you. And don't worry that Douglas graduation won't have any effect on your...
Okay, please don't. Well, my son's a Senator if that helps.
Welcome Sherri.
Thank you.
Tell us about a project where you brought together multiple groups of people who had either different interests, socio-economic and/or cultural backgrounds.
So, top of mind for me is the Stewart Indian School. Um, that's a, a rather large project as you saw in my documents here. It's 110 acres, over 65 buildings at the Stewart Indian School. And so this really came about as an idea, um, 14 years ago. Um, initially it was a meeting with my supervisor then and she had said to me, "What is it that, that you see, um, that you want to promote or to carry on, um, here at the Indian Commission?" And I said, "Preservation of this school, the Stewart Indian School." And so it's been years of building relationships and partnerships and getting to know people and getting the story of the Stewart Indian School out there. And, um, so through this process, um, at first it was the Stewart Indian School Trail, uh, which is a self-guided cellphone walking tour of the campus. And that actually brought together, um, the Stewart alumni who are interested in telling their story. It brought together, um, the tribes to support what we were trying to do to tell the story. And then it also brought, um, uh, tourism groups together. We actually worked with the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority and, um, the Carson City Visitors Bureau at the time, um, on that particular project to bring it to fruition. And again, that was just an idea. Um, I had found the vendor for Guide by Sell in a conference that I was at in Minneapolis and I thought, "Oh my gosh, we could, we could use this here in Carson City." And so we, we brought all of those people together to create an attraction, actually an award-winning attraction, uh, because the Reno Tahoe Territory gave me an award, uh, for developing that. Um, and then as we moved on, we started to do more tours of the campus. Um, so again, we're bringing the public in, we're bringing civic groups in to tell the story of the Stewart Indian School. Uh, and then we started working on, okay, well, what is, what is the vision of this place? Is it just a tour? Is it just a cultural center and a welcome center? Or is it something bigger? And, um, so, uh, initially it was the cultural center and welcome center. So again, bringing, bringing everybody to the table, bringing, um, the State of Nevada to the table, bringing those state agencies that have authorities out at the Stewart Indian School. So we're talking state lands, buildings and grounds, state public works division, state historic preservation office, bringing them all together to kind of get on the same page of, of where we want to go with this. Um, and then learning how to work with each other, um, because, you know, we all have different policies and we have, um, different processes, um, that we have to fulfill, um, as we move forward with plans. And then, um, the, the vision broadened. It wasn't just the cultural center and the welcome center. It was, okay, well, we have this big, huge campus here that the State of Nevada's never had a plan for. So what are we going to do with this beautiful asset? This asset that's a part of Carson City and that's part of the State of Nevada and really the fabric of this nation. Nobody knows this story and how do we tell this story? So, uh, we brought together a team, uh, to begin a master plan of the facility. And so that team, we, um, were able to secure funds, uh, initially from the state legislature for a portion, uh, of the master plan and then, uh, to work with, uh, the Nevada Division of Tourism, uh, on some additional funds, um, some room tax funds. Um, so we had to go, I had to go before the Nevada Commission on Tourism and before the Interim Finance Committee of the State of Nevada to secure those funds, uh, which would, um, enhance the master plan by providing, uh, a market study, a business plan and a strategic plan, which was so important, um, to the future, um, of this school. And, uh, so through the master plan process, it was, again, bringing all those stakeholders together that reside out at the Stewart Indian School, bringing, um, administration of the state. So we interviewed the, the governor, um, other state agency heads, um, like, uh, tourism and, um, state lands, um, state public works. And then, um, tourism officials as well, like, um, the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority and, uh, Stewart alumni and tribal leaders, um, across the state. Uh, so we had a number of people that we had to bring together and, um, find out kind of what their view of the school was, what they thought the future of the school could be and put all of that into one document. And so I'm proud to say that we completed that, um, this last year in, in May of 2018. And, um, I've been able to, to leaf through all of it and, uh, really look at implementation now of that plan and that's going to take additional resources. And so, um, that is what I have requested in this next legislative session. So, we're, we're on our way and I think that, um, Carson City is going to be a big partner in where we go, uh, with the Stewart Indian School. Long answer. Thank you.
How do you see tourism playing a significant and positive role with the ongoing revitalization of our downtown and our community as a whole?
Can you repeat the, the first part?
Sure. How do you see tourism playing a significant and positive role with the ongoing revitalization of our downtown and the community as a whole?
Right. I was telling Joel that, um, you know, since I've been with the Commission, it's been 14 years and this whole time we've been working on, on Stewart Indian School as a, a cultural heritage tourism destination. And I've seen such a, uh, transformation of, um, Carson City's brand and of, um, the whole downtown area. And I think that, um, marketing what we have now is going to be so much easier because it's, it's really, um, transformed the downtown area. When, uh, my family and I come downtown now, it's amazing to see, um, the, the vibrancy of the downtown area and the people walking around and just enjoying being outside and having a meal. And, um, so I think that tourism is going to be key to continuing that, um, inviting more people in as we, um, as we continue to, to get more and more, um, of the, the businesses up and going in the downtown area, um, I think is going to be key to that. And, uh, it's all about, again, I go back to telling our story on who we are, um, as far as Carson City and, and what we have to offer. Uh, but I don't think that, um, I love downtown, but I think that we have other opportunities too in Carson City, um, to build more and to invite more and to invite, um, let me back up a little. A lot of the work that I've done has been for tribal tourism and, across the nation, actually, I'm the, on the Board of Directors for the American Indian Alaska Native Tourism Association. And so we work with all 573 tribes nationwide, um, to, um, enhance tourism in their areas and to enhance their attractions and destinations. And so some of the things that we've found, um, especially with international, um, travelers is that they want to, um, come to the United States to experience something, something unique that they can go back and tell, um, their families about or that they can, you know, brag about to other people. Um, and so I think Carson City could be that. I think that, um, with what we have planned for the Stewart Indian School can attract a whole different market, um, to the Carson City area. And I know that, um, the state does a really good job of bringing, um, uh, new markets in and international travelers in. And I think Carson City, um, could be a part of that. And, um, so I think that tourism's going to play a, a huge role in, um, the continuation of, of the, um, growth of the downtown area and other parts of Carson City.
And just a follow-up to that, um, how would you increase the CTA's stakeholder engagement in that process?
So, I'm in the business of relationship building. That's what I do. I am the liaison for the governor to the 27 tribes in the State of Nevada. And so, um, the past 14 years have been getting to know people and meeting with people and going out to where they are, um, to engage them. And I think that's so important because, you know, even in the last Nevada Day Parade, I sat there and I watched the parade and I thought, "My goodness, look at all of these different kinds of people in our community." And even I was surprised. And, uh, so I think that the whole key to engagement is going where those people are, going to their communities, going to their events and, and just getting to know them. I know it's true for the Native American community, you have to get out into their communities because it's all about not just building relationships, but building trust with people. And so that's one thing that I've learned over the last 14 years is that you have to get out there and engage and you have to, to be, um, in, in their community and, um, draw them in that way. They are more apt to, um, engage when they know you and they trust you. Thank you.
Uh, my question is this, um, in December of 2015, Carson City opened the MAC. With, uh, over 24,000 square feet of open floor space, what type of events do you feel the CTA should recruit to real, to, um, you know, bring potential return on investment for the Carson City Cultural and Tourism?
Good question. Um, so I've recently had experience at, at the MAC Center. It's, it's a beautiful facility. It's kind of misleading when you look at the front of the building because you think, "Oh, okay, here's this," you know, it looks, doesn't look as big as it actually is, uh, when you go inside. I haven't had the full tour of the facility, but the events, um, that I have attended there have been, um, cultural events, the, the, um, the Nevada Day Powwow or the, it was prior to Lakalilby Powwow. And so I think more of those types of events, you know, where you're inviting the community in, uh, to see, uh, what is available there, I think is, is a good idea, um, to continue. And then, um, I know that, um, close to, um, um, the plan for Carson City is to include, um, I was going to say athletic tourism, um, but invite more of those, um, types of events, um, to participate and to utilize, um, that, that particular space.
Thank you.
Sports tourism. There you go.
That's the word.
Sherri, tell us about your experience in writing and administering grants.
Okay, did you guys see my application? It actually looked better when I put it in there because it was a really nice table and then I saw it afterward and I'm like, "Oh my gosh." Uh, but I've had extensive experience writing grants. Um, you know, many, many of the candidates that, um, for this particular position have had, um, do have large budgets that they're able to, um, operate from. Not so with the Nevada Indian Commission. As you saw, uh, in my information here, it was a very small agency when I first got there in 2004. Uh, two people, actually one, uh, for almost a whole year, uh, my first year that I was there. And, um, so I've been able to really build something from nothing. And I was able to do that through those strategic partnerships and relationships and by writing grants. And, um, so that started really early on, um, because, you know, as a State of Nevada agency, uh, we have limited funds, we have limited appropriations and the only way, way to get things done is by writing grants. And so I initially started out, um, small. Um, Stewart Indian School Trail was probably one of those first ones, first grants, um, that I had written. Um, and then, um, as we started to go down the road of, um, creating this Stewart Indian School Living Legacy, I started to begin to see that, okay, it's going to be very competitive to get funding, uh, for any type of rehabilitation or renovation of the buildings out at Stewart Indian School. So I need to research where these grants are and, um, and start putting in for them. And so we started to do that through the, um, State Historic Preservation Office. They administer the, what they call now, the Commission for Cultural Centers and Historic Preservation Grant. And so we started to write for that grant and you'd notice in my application, um, that I've written three or four of those and, um, that we ask for 300,000 and we get about half of that. Um, but that's because they have limited funds of, as well to go around. But I will say that we were probably in the top five of every, every grant, um, period that we put in for, um, and the amount of money that we received. And so we just tried to kind of enhance that application, um, year after year and, and kind of look for those, those things that we felt that they would fund. Um, and, um, I also have written grants to the Nevada Arts Council and, um, the, um, Nevada Commission on Tourism. They're, both their marketing grant program and their projects related to tourism grant program. Um, under Nevada Arts Council, we, um, we utilize their Circuit Rider Grant, their, um, project grant, their Folk Life Grant and their jackpot grants. Um, I've written grants to tribes, um, across the country and, um, so extensive grant writing. I've also sat on panels for grants. I currently am the Chair of Nevada's Indian Territory, uh, which is a marketing arm of the Nevada Commission on Tourism. So I, um, work with all the tribes in the state to, um, to bring, um, technical assistance and training on tourism to them. And, uh, so through that capacity, I sit on the Territory Advisory Committee. The Territory Advisory Committee decides on, um, the projects related to, not the projects, um, the marketing grant program, on who gets those grants and how much they get granted for. Um, so I've been on that since 2010 about. Um, and then I have also sat on a national panel for the National Endowment of the Arts for their, our, our place grants. So I have a, a good understanding of what it takes, the, the detail, the, uh, the attention to detail and the instructions, um, that the grant programs call for. Um, and then of course the, the maintenance of those grants and the reporting on those grants as well.
And then a follow-up question. Can you give us an example of a grant-funded project you think could benefit the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority and why?
That's a hard question, Mike. A grant-funded program that could benefit the Tourism Authority and why? Well, I could say the, um, the Travel Nevada Grants or the Commission on Tourism Grants, but I know you all already applied for those and actually was sat in on the last, um, panel for those grants that we decided on, um, earlier this month. Um, but I think that, uh, participating on the Nevada Endowment of the Arts, um, panel, um, their Arts Town Grants and their, um, placemaking grants, I think would be very beneficial to Carson City. Um, I reviewed about 30 of those grants and, boy, some of those grants are really amazing, uh, what, what, um, some of these entities are doing across the country. And so I think that, um, Carson City could definitely, um, benefit, um, from that particular grant. Um, they had some great ideas of, um, engaging the community and creating, um, our space here, um, in Carson City. And so I was really excited, uh, when I was on that panel because all these ideas were going through my head on how, um, we could benefit, um, not only at the Stewart Indian School, but Carson City as well.
Thank you.
All right, Sherri, what do you consider is Carson City's top culture and tourism assets?
Uh, I feel like I keep, you know, pointing to, um, the Stewart Indian School, but, you know, I truly believe that, um, it is one of the, um, probably most unique and, um, most underutilized assets, um, in the area here. And, um, you know, I, I talk about it all the time and, and I, I really sell it as, um, this unique experience that, um, nobody else has. There were hundreds of these Indian boarding schools across the nation and, um, only very few are still existing. Uh, there are actually a few that are still in operation, uh, but none of them look like the Stewart Indian School. None of them have the native stone from the Carson City area. Um, none of them have the access that we have to the facility. None of them have the support that we have from the community, the community at large, the tribal community and, um, the State of Nevada. Uh, and by support, I mean financial support. So I talked earlier about, you know, having to write grants because, um, that's the way we were going to get things done. Um, but now, here we are in 2018 and we have a budget, uh, for the cultural center. We have people in place that are going to establish this cultural center. Uh, we have requests in place to continue to fund, um, at high levels, uh, from state funds. Um, in the 2017 session, we received 5.7 million dollars for the Stewart Indian School. And this time around, I'm requesting over 12 million. And, um, so, uh, that to me is one of the assets that we have. The other assets, um, that I think are important to note, um, are our people, um, that we have here in the state. You know, we're always looking for those, those influencers that, um, can tell a, a great story or have a great story, um, to tell. And, um, And so there are amazing people that live here in our state and in this Carson City area or region here. And so I think that's an asset. And I think that our, our region itself, our surroundings here, our 300 Days of Sun and our beautiful Sierra Mountains and the wide outdoor spaces that we have here. I told you, I traveled, you know, across the country to different states. I've traveled to other countries as well. China comes to mind to me. I went there, actually, with Travel Nevada, I don't know, six, six, seven years ago. And just flying into Guangzhou, Beijing, Chengdu, it was just an eye-opener. I mean, there is no space. They have built up all the way around because they have no space. And so I think that's a huge asset for us here in Nevada is to have those wide open spaces to be able to share with our visitors.
All right. So how could you improve the CTA's current marketing platform in an effort to extend, extend our brand awareness?
So I think that, wow, that's a hard question because I think we have a really great foundation that has been built here in Carson City. And I think that, you know, the, the more work that we do, all these things just came to my head. So can you, can you reiterate the question? Sorry.
How could you improve CTA's current marketing platform in an effort to extend brand awareness?
So I think that, you know, just some of the things that I talked about earlier. I know that the CTA is, I've seen the, the videos and things that, you know, you guys are trying to capture more of those stories of, of individuals here in the area. And I think that we could definitely do more of that. And I think that we can go into other demographic of the area and do some more of that. I think that, again, with the Stewart Indian School coming online, we can do more international outreach. Because, you know, I sat on the U.S. Department of Commerce Travel and Tourism Advisory Board. And that organization advises the Secretary of Commerce, as well as the White House, on tourism. And so I saw a lot of data, a lot of statistics, and statistics about people traveling to Indian country and, and where internationals tend to want to go and where they want to travel to when they come to the U.S. And top five are national parks, and they want to see the indigenous people, American Indians. And so I think that we could utilize those assets as well to be able to, to market in that particular way. I think that that's something that, that we could definitely enhance in the area.
Sherry, discuss your philosophy in the use of room tax in funding special events.
My philosophy? Fund them all. So I guess for utilizing room tax, we would have to keep top of mind, what, what events are, are bringing people into the area, right? Are they bringing people to stay in the area? Are they, and even if, if that is not significant, can we help them build, build their events up? And I think that, you know, having experience and having events here in the area, it's important to have the assistance of our partners. So for example, we, for the Stewart Father's Day Powwow at its Stewart, it's a three-day event. We get about 3,000 people throughout the three-day weekend. And we bring in bleachers from Carson City Parks and Recreation. So that way, the spectators have a place to sit. That's really important because everybody else brings their, their shade tents and their, their chairs, and then you can't really get to an area where you can see really well. I just found out from Carson City that those bleachers aren't going to be available to us. They're taking them out of service. I'm not sure why. But I think things like that, where we can help events to bring in more people, whether that's marketing or, or just having the infrastructure to be able to assist. And so I think that we have to look at events that are going to enhance the community here and going to, are going to, to make this a more enticing place for people to come and to visit and to experience these events. So I think that would be kind of top of mind for deciding on, on which events should be, should be funded and marketed. I think that definitely we'd have to look at the diversity. We don't, I would think that we would want to, to take a look at events from different sectors and different, because not everybody likes the same thing. You know, we want a variety of events here in Carson City.
Good answer. And just a follow-up. Should all special events that receive room tax funding be required to drive room nights?
I know that's where, I know that's where the, the funding comes from for the CTA. And I think that should definitely be a consideration. But I also think that these smaller events can enhance the experience while they're here in Carson City. And so if we can keep people here a few more hours or, you know, tie together a few different attractions and events, they're going to spend the night. And so, again, I think that's a consideration, but I don't think that should be the only consideration. Hi.
Okay. So in 2016, Carson City Board of Supervisors approved a 1% increase in transit occupancy tax to be dedicated to the CTA in its efforts to diversify its current offerings and allow Carson City to compete in a cultural tourism market. Additionally, the funds were used to hire an arts and cultural coordinator and cover operational costs associated with the implementation of the Carson City Arts and Cultural Master Plan. With this increase in the room tax being approved with a five-year sunset clause, what outcomes, result would you work to achieve to ensure the CTA Board recommends the continuation, continuing of the funding past 2021?
So specifically for arts and culture and for that particular position?
Yes.
So, okay, so to continue funding for, for those particular things, I think that we would have to take a look at what has been accomplished in that particular timeframe and, and as far as, I guess I would look at, too, the, the community engagement. Kind of being from the community here, I have, I've seen a change. You know, we've, we've seen additional art, we've seen additional performances, we see the, the music concerts here in the, the city. And so I think that this, this whole idea of improving our, our life experience here in this community and, you know, inviting others from different areas to come in and to experience that as well is, is really important. And I think for those dollars to continue, we would have to definitely measure, measure that and maybe that's, you know, surveys throughout the community and finding out if, how they feel about it and how, how the community feels and, and community at large and different communities as well. But I sure have seen a, a significant change in Carson City.
Thank you.
All right, Sherry, could you define KPIs and indicate what you would consider the KPIs for Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority?
So KPIs, performance indicators, measurements. We have those at the state level as well. And I think definitely room tax is one of those. And I think that employment, economic development, room nights, occupancy rates, the amount, I can't think of the word right now, but the, the level of, of room, the people are spending for rooms.
ADR.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think all of those are good indicators.
Thank you. I've got a couple more follow-up questions for you. Thinking back on your career, tell me about the project you are most proud of and why.
You guys are all smiling at me. Definitely the Stewart Indian School. You know, like I said, it was, it was an idea and, and then a vision of, of what the school could be. And so now that it's coming to fruition and it has a plan, it's even more exciting to see the opportunities that the Stewart Indian School could afford Carson City. One of the other things I wanted to mention was the National Historic Landmark nomination that we've been able to, to complete. We actually utilized some of those room tax funds for completion of the nomination application. I think that's going to be huge for Carson City. We only have one other National Historic Landmark, and that's the McKean Motor Car. And the, the Stewart Indian School would only be the third of the Indian boarding schools on the National Historic Landmark Register. And so I think that's not only going to put Stewart Indian School on the map, but I think that it will only enhance what we can do here in Carson City and the number of people that will arrive because it's on their bucket list to see these National Historic Landmarks.
And then just another follow-up to that. What was the biggest challenge you faced achieving that?
I think initially, it's, it's kind of twofold. I think initially, it was getting people to listen. It's like, okay, here she is, she's talking about this Indian school again. It's just a school. And, but it's much, much more than that. It's about the history of the school, its connection to Carson City at large, and also providing a platform for the thousands of students that went to the school to be able to have a voice, to be able to tell their stories. When these children were at the school, they didn't have a voice. Their voice was taken away from them. And so I think that, you know, getting people to understand the importance of the school and then the funding was the huge issue. You know, where, where are all these funds going to come from to rehabilitate these big, beautiful buildings out here? And so that definitely was a challenge, but as I said, you know, starting to write those grants, showing the state that we're doing our due diligence and that we're bringing to the table funding that could help, help this rehabilitation to carry forward, I think was key. Because when we finally got to the legislature with this proposal for these buildings, they could see that we had worked really hard to bring our partners to the table and to bring funding to the table with us. And $5.7 million. And I don't know of any other, any other project of this magnitude or of, you know, Native American project in the country that is receiving funds like we've received from the State of Nevada.
Thank you. And the last couple. First, tell us what makes you the best candidate for the position?
I knew this was coming. So for me, I, I think there's a lot of reasons. I'm a visionary, but I'm also the type of person that's going to carry something through. I have a lot of good ideas and there's a lot of good idea people out there, but we need people that are going to carry through on their goals and their objectives and attain those goals. I'm that person. I work really hard and I don't expect my staff to do anything that I wouldn't do. I'm not afraid to roll up my sleeves and do the hard work and get it done. I am, as I said before, a native Nevadan. I understand Nevada and Nevadans. I have a successful background in, in grant writing, as, as you can see in the application there. But more importantly, I think I have the, the relationships within the state and within the region here and really, and across the country. I've mentioned IANTA, the American Indian Alaska Native Tourism Association. So I've been able to build relationships across the country, to testify before the Senate Committee on Indian Affairs in regard to tourism and its importance, not only to the tribal communities, but to this nation. I've, have experience in front of the state legislature advocating for our budgets and for the Stewart Indian School. And so I think all of that, you know, experience with the media, you know, as Stewart has grown, we've been out in the media a lot more. So I understand how important it is to, to say the right thing and not to get caught up with the media. So I think I have a, a lot of experience that will be beneficial to the CTA. I've been an executive director of a State of Nevada agency for the last 14 years. So I understand the processes, the contracting that just comes to mind on, you know, we have certain restrictions and certain guidelines that we have to go by, and I know that the, the CTA does as well. So I understand all of those inner workings of an agency like this. And I know the political climate here in the state. I've worked very closely with congressional, our congressional representatives. In fact, I go to Washington, D.C. probably at least once a quarter to visit with our delegation about tourism. So I'm very familiar with them and, and the whole governmental processes on the federal, the state, and the local level. So, and tribal level. Can't forget about that.
And if you were selected for the position, how soon would you be able to start?
I knew that was coming, too. So we have a lot of irons in the fire right now, but I have been working to So we have a lot of irons in the fire right now, but I have been working to kind of get everything in place prior to the end of the year. So I'm thinking at least by the end of December.
And finally, any questions for us, the board? Anything you'd like to add before we end the interview?
I just want to thank you for allowing me the time today. I was really honored to be able to be one of the top three of the candidates for this particular position. I had received the application and actually had forwarded on to a colleague and then just kind of, you know, clicked out of it. And I'd gone back in and I read through it again, and I thought, wow. This really calls to me because this is, this is what I want to do. I've not only done tourism for the Stewart Indian School for the past 14 years, but I've worked with all of the tribes, the Indian Affairs Director. That is everything. I mean, that is taxation, that's cannabis, that's water rights. So I'm very familiar with all of that. But one of the things that really spoke to me through all of these years was tourism. And so that's where my heart is. And somebody actually asked me the other day, "Wow, Sherri, I never thought that you'd leave Stewart Indian School." And I said, "I'm not leaving Stewart Indian School. I'm right here. Stewart is in Carson City. Stewart is Carson City." And so I feel like through this position, I would still be able to help Stewart, just on a different level. I'm not going away. You know, I'm still going to participate in any way that I can because I feel very strongly. And that's another thing about me, is that I don't like to sit on committees just to have a title, or you're a commissioner, or you're a chairperson. I want to be able to do something. I want to be able to benefit that organization. And I feel like I can do that with the CTA.
Well, great. Thank you. Again, I appreciate you coming in today and spending some time with us. You know, everybody's got a busy schedule, and so thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.